Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the November 21st, 2011 meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners to order. Before we get started, we lost a fine gentleman in our community this past week, Mr. Bob Henley, and I would just ask all of you to keep his family in your prayers as we move forward. And with that, Paul, you said you had a comment or two?
I was just going to say that man spent a lot of time praying for this Board of Commissioners and was kind of our honorary chaplain. Started getting the Ministerials Association to have someone come and pray before our meetings, and when nobody filled in, he would be here to pray, and he was just a fine individual, a fine gentleman, and the community's going to definitely miss him.
No doubt. Thank you. Tonight, we have Reverend Dennis Crehan of the Jarvisburg Church of Christ, who will be delivering our invocation and also lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we stand here before you tonight, literally in a position of humble servant-toed, Lord, because you're Lord of this world and you're Lord of creation. You're the one and only true God that exists. And tonight, we just bow before you and give you the glory that you so deserve. And Lord, tonight, we do pray for the Henley family, and Bobby was a righteous servant, and the whole will be in this county, and we will step forward and make sure that the good news that Bobby always spread would get out through this county. And even before this board, as he was instrumental in having prayer started before these meetings, Lord, he labored over praying for this board. And as ministers of the Christian church, Lord, we will do the same, because these are your officials, dear God. They've been ordained to do a task in our county, but since you superintend the entire world, they are your representatives as well. So I pray, Lord, that you give them great strength. I pray, Lord, that you give them peace. I pray that you really just give them a real earnest desire to do the good things for us that are in this county, and the things that they've done in their past, Lord, are representing us. So I pray you bless them. And Lord, we just lift this night up to you, and I pray this meeting goes well. I pray that you're glorified in all that is said and done. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. At six o'clock this evening, ladies and gentlemen, we had a work session to discuss the economic incentive plan with members of our county ED Board and staff. Mr. Bishop, thank you much for your presentation. Very informative. And also, at 6:30, we had a work session to discuss stormwater issues in the North Beach area. Moving along, item number one is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I would like to delete item three from the consent agenda and add a closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A5 to instruct our county staff concerning the position or action to be taken on behalf of the county in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract for the acquisition of the following real property. Property located at 5574 Kerituck Highway Papa Branch, North Carolina, owned by Thomas W. White and wife, Wanda C. White, to use for any public purpose. And two, property located within the boundaries of the Currituck Regional Airport, Maple, North Carolina, owned by Connie Brace and John Brace and Danny Brace, to be used for any public purpose. Do I have a second? Or do I have a motion and a second?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have. Item number two is public comment. This is a time for the public to comment on anything that's of items of interest. I would ask that you limit your time to three minutes, and Mr. McCree, if you'd be so kind to be our timekeeper. We have three people signed up. Ms. Doris Flora, please come forward and give us your name, although we all know you, but your address and...
My name is Doris Flora, and I live at 430 Kerituck Highway in Mooyaw. Chairman, members of the board, I'm here tonight to express my concerns about the cyber centers and the Sweet States Cafe that have been popping up in Mooyaw. I would want to know, how does it help our county? Does it put anything in our coffers that will help with taxes, permits, benefits of any kind? I have researched, and I've called, and I've asked, and nobody seems to know. I understand that it is legal, the internet cafes. I understand that the video games that they did play at one time are not legal. I think that some of them have to be associated, like to, with a business, so that they can be under that umbrella of being a part of a company's business. I understand that. But I still think there's a lot, a lot, a lot of people coming through here, and they're spending money in Currituck, and we're not getting anything from it. I understand, and I've been informed, that Elizabeth City has the cafes, and they are allowed to charge a fee, also a per-unit charge of up to $500 per computer, per computer now, which in there equated about $36,000. I don't see why our coffers cannot be rewarded and help our county grow and continue with our things that we want to do in our county. I'm not against the gambling. If they want to gamble, that's okay. But the next thing I'm going to say is, I understand that they're applying or would like to apply for an alcoholic beverage permit. I don't know about that. I understand that there's a lot of money going through a lot of this. I have pulled off the internet today that in other parts of the state, like around Raleigh and Durham, that there have been robberies in these cyber cafes, because they're getting in a lot of money. They're buying time on the internet. I just want to make sure that we, as a county, are getting our portion of this business, they are a business, to put on our tax base. We ask everybody else. We've asked Ace Hardware to pay their taxes. I pay my taxes. You pay your taxes. They ought to pay their taxes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. It's interesting you bring this up. I've had that same discussion this week with staff, and Ike or Dan, would you all like either one to address?
I'll go ahead and handle part of this. First, is a minor correction. These internet gaming sites, as a principal use, are not allowed in Currituck County. We currently have several operating. They are being cited daily, because again, as a primary use, they're not allowed within Currituck County. What do we get from them? As far as financial resources going into the county government? Little to no proceeds end up kind of going to the county government. She mentioned Elizabeth City. Unfortunately, that is a distinction in the state statutes. Municipal code allows towns and cities to do privileged license and do some assessments that county governments do not have the same access to. So at this time, it's questionable whether we would have the ability to actually cite them if the board was to determine in the future that these would be allowable. Commissioner Petrie, because this is a hot-up topic for us, has asked if we could, at your next meeting, if we could have a work session where staff can come forward and present to you both the legal standing as they exist right now in statute and in your UDO, as well as the planning staff doing a presentation on the use. So we're going to come back to you at your next meeting with the work session to give you more detail, but at least right now, to answer Ms. Flora's questions, county government receives basically nothing from these, other than just the general property tax that comes off the property. Again, we are precluded from doing machine assessments, it appears at this time, but the bottom line is, right now, they're not permissible.
Okay. And is there not some type of litigation that's going on now, an appeal or something that statewide to...
There is. The state of North Carolina, the General Assembly, has passed law that prohibits these kinds of activities. There was at least two different vendors that have challenged that statute. One court has ruled that there is problems with the way the general statutes was written. Another court has ruled that has upheld, basically, what the General Assembly did. So we have litigation going in in our court system, and two different courts have not concurred on the point. So that is being, in fact, I think it's already been argued with the Court of Appeals, to kind of get consistency within the general statute. So you've got the general statute piece that's working through, and if it was ultimately determined at that level that it was illegal in North Carolina, then the question really is moot for this board to determine, once the state says they're legal. But you've got that issue, the general statute piece, but you also have local law that this Board of Commissioners, it's well within your purview to create. You create that within your unified development ordinance, and at the local law, the board has, at this point in time, determined that these uses are not allowed as a principal use in Currituck County. So you've got actually two pieces of legislation that is addressing legality of these kinds of operations.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am, you certainly can.
This is a business, is it not?
Yes, ma'am. I...
How did they get here to start with? I mean, the one across the road from me just, like, bloomed up overnight. Another one down the road is just, don't they have to go and get a permit to have a business?
I'll let staff address that.
Illegal businesses generally don't come to us to get their permits, so I agree. I don't mean that in jest, but they should.
I mean, I'm just asking, because I don't know.
There are building code issues. There's planning and zoning issues. We are in the process of finding them as we speak. They're under violation with Currituck County.
So we are addressing them.
Yes, we are, because they did not come in and follow proper procedures.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I'll ask Mr. Scannell this too, because we have the same thing occasionally with other infractions, and it's an interesting point Ms. Flora brought up, because I had a constituent call me, was interested in getting into this business, because a friend of his up where the State Line used car lot is trying to be converted now, said they were getting something on the order of about $2,000 a night from these machines. Are our fines that we're levelling for violations of the permit process sufficient that we could consider that to be some sort of county revenue enhancement? Are we, in fact, enforcing and collecting those fines? Because I know if we get into the litigation process, we've had that problem with Lamar's big digital billboard for how many years now down there? And that's still ongoing. Our ability to actually enforce the law, other than actually collecting the fines from them, that may be the only thing we can do.
I think the challenge in your comment is, when these kinds of businesses make the amount of money that we're hearing that they're making, the level of fines that we're assessing daily are considered to be just a cost of doing business. But we do, they do accumulate these on a daily basis, and when they get to a significant amount that justifies our efforts to take them to court, the county attorney will be taking them into court. We will pursue these to fruition. Now, as far as the fines themselves, do they come to the county coffers under state law right now? Actually, no, they would end up actually going to the Board of Education.
Well, that still helps us out.
It certainly helps Currituck County.
And my point really was getting at Ms. Flora's point, is we ought to get paid somehow. If we can't tax them, we should be able to collect the fines.
We will get paid through the court system.
Thank you.
If I made a Mrs. Flora's point, if we had a unified government in Currituck County, we could assess the fees that Elizabeth City is assessing them, and we would derive way more revenue by doing that than we would fining them and fighting them in court.
There are a number of other tax advantages that we have too, as far as economic development, the ability to do things that would help the taxpayers.
Okay. Anyone else have a comment?
I would only like to say that we do not have a business tax or a business permit to do business in this county, so anybody can come in and start a business without the county knowing it.
That's because we are a county and not a fall under the municipal code, like a unified government would.
Well, but you could impose a privileged license, and of course, the county had one about 20 years ago, and it repealed it. So there was one in place at one time in this county.
But it's a very modest fee that you're...
Oh, yes. You're right. In any event, it is not to raise revenue, but rather it is a regulatory tool, so that you do have an idea of what businesses are operating within your county.
It's just a double-edged sword, though. I mean, you know, we had a meeting this afternoon talking about economic development and plans to help economic development within the county, and then we come up with a charge for somebody to, you know, it's not easy. But anyhow, Ms. Flora, thank you very much for your comments. Next, we have Marie Long. How are you, ma'am?
Hi, thanks. How are you? Actually, I'm very nervous.
Don't be nervous.
Okay. My name's Marie Long, and I live at 1437 Ocean Pearl Road. This is in the ocean beach section of the four-wheel-drive area. I'm at approximately mile 14.2, second house up the beach. I'm here to speak to you on the possibility of the creation of a safe zone on the off-road beaches. I understand it's just a possibility. It may look like I'm jumping the gun, but I really have a really strong opposition, and I wanted to publicly voice that. The obvious reasons, which I know you have heard, are the problems with vehicles getting stuck, as well as damage to the already fragile beach and potential damage to the dunes. I'm against a safe zone anywhere in the four-wheel-drive area. However, since my home's in the ocean beach section, I can speak about that area most factually and from personal knowledge. Currently, in the one-mile stretch from mile post 14 to 15, there are 15 houses, two more are under construction currently, and three of these homes are non-rentals. If I take the number of bedrooms in these houses, approximately 128, and multiply by two visitors per bedroom, both figures are very conservative. That comes out to a minimum of 256 people on the beach in that one mile. That's people, not vehicles. These are people who have paid from $6,000 to $22,000 for a week's stay, in houses which create property tax and occupancy tax to the county. Our area was drastically affected last year by the elimination of one mile of parking in front of the Federal Reserve that ends at mile post 14. I've counted as many as 200 parked vehicles jammed in our one-mile area. By far, the majority of these visitors are day-trippers, and day-trippers is not negative. It's not derogatory. Don't get all upset. A day-tripper is simply someone who is not sleeping in the four-wheel-drive area. They're there for the day, and they leave. The majority of these people are from the paved road area. How fair is it to the renters of the homes in four-wheel-drive to have a virtual parking lot in front of their home? You have to go down early in the morning and try to snag a spot before the invasion. Now, you might think, yes, but wouldn't they be happy to have no traffic between their vehicle and the ocean? Well, since they have to get to the middle of the beach by going through an extremely unsafe zone, I would say no. I'm not sure that you can imagine the volume of traffic driving through nonstop in the summer months. I'm also not sure you can imagine how many vehicles get stuck. The sand is deep, it's dry, and it's rutted. Even an experienced driver, with their tire pressure lowered, has trouble. There are no lanes, there's no clear direction. People drive where they want. When one guy gets stuck, the next guy tries to go around him, and he gets stuck. Then someone tries to stop to help, and the things get even more jammed up. Then you have the yahoo who wants to fly around the whole thing. It's clearly unfair to residents who have to drive the beach daily to get to and from work. Then you can center the renters, who are actually staying in the four-wheel-drive area, the rental company employees and their vendors, the construction trucks, the tractor-trailers from Kellogg's, Riggs, and Ferguson hauling equipment and supplies, the utility and phone trucks, the water waste management trucks, and most importantly, the emergency vehicles. I'm not exaggerating to you. The situation is dangerous, and by combining two areas of traffic into one area, you're creating an even more unsafe situation. It's clear that you are all concerned about the safety there, but before you make any decisions, you need to really come and observe. I'm inviting all of you to come to my house. I'll feed you. You can use my bathrooms. You don't have to climb over my dunes and use the bathroom behind them, which is a whole different problem. My suggestion as an immediate action is to have the current rules enforced aggressively. If people would abide by the 15 mile-per-hour speed limit, there would be a dramatic, a drastic decrease in the danger. I absolutely support the sheriff deputies on the beach. Their job is definitely to enforce the rules, but they cannot do it properly with the current staffing. I know you've increased the staff before, but it is not enough. Take some of that occupancy tax money and let them hire what they need. I'm a real beach guard, and I'm on the beach almost daily. If you gave me a radar gun and a badge, I could easily give out tickets nonstop in just my one-mile area. If it were my decision, the deputies would not all drive the full 11-mile beach per se. I'd divide the beach up into sections, taking into consideration the congestion in each section, and I'd assign two deputies to tag-team and sight violators. The word is out that if you exceed 25 miles per hour in duck, you will be ticketed. No one drives over the speed limit there. Plus, it sure doesn't seem to have hurt their tourism at all. We need to get the same kind of word out about four-wheel-drive. You don't want people visiting who disobey laws. They are hurting, not helping your county. Get the word out that you, the county government, want the rules enforced. Do a media blitz on the radio, announcing in a positive way that you are here to protect our law-abiding citizens, and we'll be enforcing all ordinances. Have the rental companies inform all renters, not just the ones renting on four-wheel-drive. I could go on here forever. I'm not going to. You're probably getting tired of hearing me, but please, 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 plan your field trip. Come visit me in July. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Next, we have Mr. Mike Long.
He was just backing me up in case you stopped me.
Okay. Thank you. We know there's issues there, and we're doing our best to try to reach some consensus on how to deal with them. And, you know, it's a living process as it moves along, and we're trying to look at some things that we can all agree on and get a start. And if that don't work, then we can look at other things, and it's going to take some time to figure it out. This problem didn't start in one year. I mean, it's been ongoing and getting there for many years, and it's not going to be solved in one, I don't believe. And I don't think any of us sitting here thinks that it will either. So, but anyhow, thank you very much for coming out. I've talked with you on the phone one time, and again, thank you for coming out.
Mr. Chairman, I want to add for the record. I keep getting emails and comments saying I need to come up there in July. I come up there. I go up there every year, June, July, August, whatever. I'm up there, and...
Seen that part of the last time?
Yes, I have, but y'all don't like my solution.
I don't know what your solution is, but if it's a safe zone, I do.
You put the people on the beach, and you drive behind them.
That's a safe zone. That's why I was just speaking to you about, and told you all the reasons why that don't work.
And you fix the roads behind the sand dunes, so people can drive on the roads like we do everywhere else in the country.
You're going to get into a whole other subject when you talk about fixing the roads, because I will give you, if you'll let me just answer you. We have run road behind that one stretch, Ocean Pearl. There's two access roads, which, by the way, are not actually dedicated roads. They are private runways, but they're used as access roads. You go up the access road, down Ocean Pearl, and back out. There is no possible way that the number of cars that are on that beach could go down that road. It won't even fit, and the people that come up there that should be there right now, the renters, they're stuck along the way because it's big. It's a real problem. And there's also a problem with where that road ends, whether there's a right-of-way for the people that own that road. It's a hole. You get into a whole lot of stuff.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Andy, you?
No. Like I said, they don't like my solution.
Item number three, okay. Public hearing action. PB 11-07, Bissel Professional Group, request to amend Chapter Four of the Unified Development Ordinance to modify the age restriction language for the Plan Adult Retirement Overlay District, RE2. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very brief. You're aware of the proposal, which is to remove the age restriction included in the county zoning ordinance. Waterside Village is a subdivision of Grandy. After our last meeting, the board asked staff to conduct an online poll or survey to determine the interest of property owners in modifying the age restriction requirement, the county age restriction requirement. We've done that. You can see the property cross-hatched in red on the slide in front of you, and I'll switch to this one. Real quickly, and I want to give you the results of the poll, then I'll turn it over to any speakers that may have comments. There are 112 platted properties in the Waterside Village's subdivision. We received 92 votes. That means 92 properties submitted a vote, which represents 82% of the subdivision. Of those 92 votes, we had 87 yes votes. That's 87 votes to overturn, to remove the age restriction. That's 94.5%. I'll note, the majority of those do come from several of the banks that own properties in that development. We also received five no votes to remove the age restriction, which was about 5.5% of the property. And just to give an illustration, the five folks that voted against removing the age restriction, their parcels were highlighted on that map. You can kind of see a dispersion. There's four that are clustered together, and there's one in the back, so. And with that, I'll answer any questions the board has about the poll and any other questions you may have.
Would it be fair to say that most of the people that lived there didn't vote? That actually...
Would you say the figures were, out of 90 some people, 80? Would you say, Ben, again?
There were 85. Eighty-five of the votes were between three entities, which is Wachovia, Bank of Currituck, and Olden Axehead Place.
And how many total votes did we have?
92. So you had seven votes that weren't bank-related. Of those seven votes that weren't bank-related, five were to not remove the age restriction, and two were to move the age restriction.
But my question is, most of the people that lived there didn't vote one way or the other?
You have qualified that between the people that own property that live there, because the people that are residents that rent couldn't vote.
Mr. Hedberg said there was, you know, 12 or 13 families. I think it was 26 people, or whatever, when he was here. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this right. There were, there's people that lived there that didn't vote one way or the other, that are property owners, not so much renters.
There's 20 property owners we did not, there's 20 properties we did not receive a vote from. Now, all those 20 properties, I don't know how many folks live there or don't live there, but 20 properties did not vote in this poll.
Okay. You answered my question. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Woody? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing, and we have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Bill Honaker. Mr. Bissel, you going to take his place?
Well, sir, I didn't sign off, because I just figured you would call me for an update.
That's fine. That's fine.
The board had suggested that...
Give you name and address if you want.
Mark Bissel, Kitty Hawk, North Carolina. The board had suggested that we have a meeting, or that Waterside Villages have a meeting with the residents to discuss the whole age restriction issue and to voice, you know, have an opportunity for the residents to voice their concerns and to have some dialogue. And Bill Honaker, who is with Waterside Villages, is actually here to provide an update on that, and if I could turn it over to him, and then I'll, you might just come back and kind of summarize it.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. Bill Honaker. Name and address, please, sir.
My name is Bill Honaker. I live in Raleigh, North Carolina, and I am the East Coast Regional Vice President for the REO Properties for Wells Fargo. I have two purposes for being here tonight. One is to put a name and a face to this entity far off into a big gray tower called Wells Fargo, and express to you that there are real people who are engaged in the decision-making for this property. Our decisions have not been made in a vacuum. We are in touch and have been in touch with the residents of the community, so, and also wanted to make myself available to you directly from the bank as a representative to answer any questions you might have about our conversations with the residents. Secondly, is to give a very brief history of our ownership and involvement with the property, and to give you some update on the most recent meeting we had with the residents. You may know we've owned the property for three and a half years, and during that period of time, it's been on the market for sale. The bank is not a developer. We are not a builder. We are interim title holder, and our duty is to take the property, like Waterside Villages, and find a suitable investor developer to buy it and move it forward. During that period of time, we've invested over half a million dollars in the property, maintaining the wastewater treatment plant... maintaining the wastewater treatment plant, keeping the amenities open, doing the maintenance that's required to keep Waterside Villages attractive and acceptable to the residents. During that time, we've defended the rights of the residents and the community to the wastewater treatment plant, and I think we've now reached a solution to convey that plant directly to the county, which I think is a positive for all involved. We've agreed to do that at no cost to the county or any other entity for that matter, as part of our expression of interest in moving this project forward and being part of the solution for the county and Waterside Villages and the other entities involved, for that matter. Lastly, our last meeting with the residents at Waterside Village was similar to those before. It was cordial, it was open, and myself and members of my team met with the residents and the HOA Management Company. We reemphasized our consistent message with the residents there that we feel like our interests, the bank's interests, and the residents' interests are mutual, that we are not opposed to each other. We both benefit, and the county benefits, if the project moves into the hands of a capable developer/investor who can move the project forward, one way or another. As I said before, the bank is an interim title holder. We're not gonna do development and home building and that kinda thing. Our place is to find a way to move it forward. And we've been doing that. We've been trying to find an investor in the community and really throughout the nation. We have, as you can imagine, a lot of properties on the market right now across the country. We've utilized brokerage firms to look for capable and interested investors across the country for this project, and we find a consistent message that the age restriction is a hindrance to their interest in the property. And so, our support for the text amendment is for the benefit of moving the project forward, which is in the best interest of the bank, and we feel it's in the best interest of the residents as well. I know, as I explained to the residents, nobody wanted to be where we are. Nobody chose to be here, but we are here, and our job is to try to find the best method for moving forward. And we think getting it into the hands of a capable investor is that solution. So, removing that one obstacle, we think is the best step in doing that. We've actually had investors, we don't have anybody ready to sign up, but we do have investors that says, as long as that's in place, I'm not sure I wanna look into that project yet. So with that said, I'd love to answer questions if you have any, or be available for you.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Honaker?
Could you explain what took place in the meeting that you had with those people who live there?
Well, we opened the meeting and explained to them that, again, reemphasized what we had given to them in the previous two meetings with them, and as well as written communications through the HOA Management Company. We really didn't wanna be the bad guy. We didn't wanna be perceived as somebody who was trying to do something in opposition to what they wanted. And several of them expressed their concern and their disappointment, that they weren't getting what they wanted, that the community wasn't moving forward, and I sympathize with that. And I've explained to them that I understand that they are not getting what they want, but as I said to you, I said to them, none of us chose to be here, and, but we find ourselves in a position that we have to move forward, and we feel like this is the best way to move forward. And I explained to them that if an investor/investor decides to take the text amendment and make the change in the age restriction, and the residents who are there don't like that move and don't like that change, we feel it would give them a bigger population of potential buyers to sell their home and then purchase another one in a community that they like better. Today, that would be very difficult. It's difficult to sell a home in that community right now. So, there was a lot of question about what ifs, and, you know, I explained to them that we don't have a strategy for what if, that we're trying to move forward. We've been committed for three and a half years, and we continue to be committed to try to move the community forward.
So there was no incentive offered by Wells Fargo to these people after they had invested some of them? You know, this was their retirement home, and they had moved here, some from South Carolina understand, and it was a retirement community. And now, if you change the age restriction, then they're going to be left, you know, without the assurances that they had when they built their homes. I was just wondering, had you all made any, you know, offers to them at all?
Of course, that came up. We were asked if there was a settlement or an offer of incentive, and frankly, that's financially impossible. If we were able to do that for every property that we had in that same condition, the bank would probably go bankrupt. But even aside from that, the principle that the developer, our borrower, made promises and even made commitments within the sales contracts, those things are difficult for a bank to take over and fulfill all of those commitments. So, bottom line is, no, we were not, we are not able to offer an incentive to the residents.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. Honaker, I think you said over the last three years, you've invested a half million dollars?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
At least.
And you're gonna continue to, this level of maintenance service until the property is sold?
Well, we hope to do that, yes, sir. Again, we're actively in the market, talking with people, so I'm hoping that that doesn't carry on for very long.
Well, my main concern all along has been that you just kinda throw your arms up and walk away and say, we'll come back another day, and then now Currituck County's got a problem.
Right.
You know, that's been my concern all along. So I feel like that where you couldn't do an incentive, me personally, if you've invested a half million dollars over three years, that's a pretty good incentive that you're trying to maintain it. That's my personal feeling.
Well, I hope the board sees that that is our intent, and has been our intent, not to throw up our hands. Frankly, it would've been very easy up at day one to say, okay, we're shuttering this place, closing the amenities, not funding any HOA dues and subsidies and letting the place...
And you'd have a half million in your pocket.
And I'd have a half million in my pocket.
Bingo.
But that's not, definitely not the way Wells Fargo does business. That's not the way we do business, and it certainly wouldn't be the best for the county or the residents. So, that's why we've elected to do what we're doing.
Any further questions from the board?
Oh, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How many vacant homes are in that property now?
Oh, my. I really don't know the specifics. Mark Bissell may have that information. We own one. That's all we, that's all that I know. Well, we own four condominium units and one single-family home.
That was my next question. It's my understanding there's a phase of condominium units that have just been framed up, that are exposed to the elements?
Most of that framing is concrete. We have a company that looks at that structure on a regular basis, mainly for safety reasons. If it ever becomes a safety hazard, obviously, we would deal with it directly and immediately, but most of that is concrete and weatherproof, but...
But I mean, it's open?
It is open.
The homes are actually dried in and secure. There's, nobody can get into them, but the underpinnings, you know, the underpinnings are not enclosed. And I think there are actually eight unoccupied, single-family homes there. The rest either have residential owners or rentals in there.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Did y'all participate in the auction that was conducted about a year ago on these, on some of these properties?
Not to my knowledge, no, sir, and it was under my management at that time.
Because I know there was an auction, somebody, I think it was Fox Auction Company held an auction on, and there were properties in Waterside Villages that were offered that, along with other properties. And my understanding was that whoever conducted it, or whichever bank had it done, they no-sailed a lot of stuff.
That may have been one of the other owners. I don't think that was Wells Fargo. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Bissell, you got anything else you'd like to say?
If I could just kinda provide a summary of why we're doing this, I think Mr. Honaker did a pretty good job of why this is really a benefit to most everyone. But just kind of in general, the change will make it the responsibility of the community association to manage what happens in the community and takes the county out of the middle of enforcing those kinds of restrictions. It's our belief that the value of the property will likely continue to decline in the absence of this amendment being adopted, since there's really no market that we can see for an age-restricted community on the horizon. I just kinda wanted to reiterate, the Waterside Villages really didn't create this problem. They lent the money, the money to a developer, and they're, you know, millions and millions of dollars in the hole on this, and they're really just trying to maintain the community. And as Mr. Honaker indicated, they've spent over half a million dollars trying to do that to date, but they need to know that there's a possibility that they can recover some value down the road through a sale, so they can continue to provide that level of maintenance. And a sale is really only likely to occur if that age restriction is lifted, which would get some developers interested in seriously taking a look at the property. Anyway, the planning staff and the planning board have both recommended the approval of the amendment, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I just want to say that I appreciate y'all making the efforts. My concern was to get everybody to the table and give everyone the opportunity to voice their opinions and concerns, and it appears that y'all have done that. When you, as far as I'm concerned, as you talk about the investment and the amount of money people's put into homes and the devaluation, for some reason, I just believe that they have a better, have a better opportunity to recoup that investment if this place was to thrive and move forward. So with that, I'm ready to move forward. So, but anyhow. Any other que, any comments? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask the board for a motion.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we, based on planning staff and planning board approval, to move to approve PB 11-07 due to the, to its consistency with the 2006 land use plan and that the request is reasonable and in the public interest and promotes orderly growth and development. That's my motion.
Motion, have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Aye, as having. Thank you.
Is that a six to one vote?
Okay, next, we have Maple, item number four, Maple Barco Small Area Plan Update, and we have our very capable Ms. Hallywhite from our planning staff is gonna provide this to us, and welcome, and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Tell us some good stuff.
Okay. Tonight, I'm here to share an update of the Maple Barco Small Area Plan of our, actually of our action plan. I'm just gonna start with going through a little bit about small area plans to refresh your memory. The Maple Barco Plan was the first small area plan adopted in the county, and that was in July of 2009. The small area plans are policy guides that help to guide growth and development in a smaller area than, like a land use plan. They're very similar to land use plans, but deal with smaller geographic areas. And we work with the community and stakeholders to develop a vision that helps to guide, to guide that growth, helps develop our policies and our actions in the plan. This was the study area of the Maple Barco Small Area Plan. We did some pretty extensive public meetings, and we formed a steering committee that helped us to put together the vision that you see on your screen there. The vision was that we would be committed to preserving the integrity of the communities by planning for strategically balancing future development, economic growth, and that we would go about that in the plan it outlines. We would go about that by preserving natural resources, by promoting aviation-related industries in the study area, by encouraging appropriate mixes of residential and commercial densities, promoting interconnectivity among parcels, and looking back towards our past and recognizing the important cultural sites in the area. That vision was the basis for the development of our policies and actions in the plan. And just to kinda break it down really simply, policies are just overall statements that the staff, the board commissioners, planning board use to look at development applications that come forward, and we look to see if the development proposal is consistent with our plan, and specifically, we usually look at the policies in the plan. And the actions are just a way for us to implement the plan, and in this case, like our small area plan, it's a work plan. We look in a five-to-10-year range that how we can accomplish the vision, and we also look at, too, that some of these things may require funding, so it helps us to prepare our budgets. At your seat tonight, I handed a handout, it's a breakdown of all the policies in the plan. There are 41 total, and in the top in the category in brown, you'll see for each sub-area of actions is shown in brown, and the status update is provided in the middle. And so, we've got complete, ongoing, and not yet complete. And so far, we've accomplished and completed 10, 10 of the actions in the plan. There are 26 that are ongoing and five that are not yet complete. Some of the major milestones, just, I'm not gonna read these line by line, give you a chance to look through them later, but the airport overlay was one of the actions listed in the plan, and that was recently adopted, just in the last month or so. The Festival of Flight at the airport was also called out as an action in the, in the plan. Another one was the development of a local steering committee that would help with the CTP process, the Conference of Transportation Plan process. And also, there are lots of the statements that you see in green that are ongoing, will be accomplished with the adoption of the UDO. So this plan provided policy direction that can now be turned into regulation in our new, new UDO. And we're not asking you to take any action, just wanted to bring an update to you tonight and give you a chance to look through this information. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer it, or you can contact me later.
Okay.
That's all I have as far as the update goes.
I have one question. I know we talked earlier, is this the time to talk about the naming? You think? Yeah. Mr. Chairman, she's getting ready to do that next. Okay.
Yeah, that's next.
Thank you.
I did wanna mention also that we held a public meeting last week on the Maple Recreation Facilities that are adjacent to the YMCA and New YMCA, New Senior Center. The meeting was well-attended, and we did have lots of good input. Our survey that we offered at the meeting is available to take online at the link listed on the screen, and you can go there. There are maps and an online survey, and you'll also have the opportunity to vote on the overall campus name. We're looking, still looking for a name for the entire campus facility, and you'll have an opportunity to choose an option or either suggest another one.
Have y'all thought about, and the steering committee thought any about, you have an overall campus name, but then a ball field or something like that could also be named in honor of someone or that type of thing?
It has been mentioned.
Okay, just wondering.
And there's an option in there to select other, and you can list out that as an option if the public would like to do that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Any questions from Mrs. White?
I have a question about that, but I'm looking at this document here, and I see so much overlap with the airport and economic development, airport, economic development. And it's really not a question for you or whatever, but it brings up the point that we have two boards that are overseeing the same tract of property, and the board really needs to consider about whether these two boards should be merged into one to oversee this, these properties versus having, they're not meeting with each other. You got just different things going on. I sit on the ED Board, and Ms. Gilbert sits on the airport board, and we're talking about the same things, but with like, you got a Macintosh computer and a Microsoft computer trying to talk to each other, they're not interfacing. And, but we're talking about the same piece of property as our economic hub in this county, and I think that the board needs to consider the, that the... And I think that the board needs to consider the, that these two boards are actually probably have so much in common that they could chew gum and walk at the same time and probably function as one board.
To comment on that, I certainly agree that on this one area, small area plan, that the airport and the ED could come up with a, a consensus of meeting maybe with the chairman and the ex officio for both of those, and I would like to include the recreation board on that, because they have a, a stake in the small area plan also at the Maple Park. So I'm the ex officio on that board also, so with the three together, I think that that would be a good merger of, of efforts.
Well, I, I would just say that the recreation board has a totally different, I don't know what the right word is, but their, their mission is totally different than economic development and developing the airport. This recreation board is, I understand, y'all are doing an outstanding job, but I, I just would stick with the fact that I think these two boards need to come together and really start working. If you put Mr. Bishop together with Jim at the, at the airport, and let them start working in concert together as one department, one board, and, and I'm not talking about eliminating anybody off the boards before anybody gets worried about that, but I just think that we're missing the boat on that, and I'll just leave it at that. I thank you.
I'd like to make a comment about that, too. We had discussed this in retreat, I think, a year or so ago, and at that point, had considered that all of these boards should be working together, in fact, the three, tourism, economic development, and airport, because they are basically the economic engine of Currituck County. And I think really what we had discussed at that time was at least perhaps the chair and another designated person from each board meeting periodically in order to be able to coordinate efforts between them. One of the things I found somewhat disconcerting was the fact at the time, because some commissioners were unhappy with the fact these boards weren't doing what they were told, decided to cut back on their meeting, so they could only meet quarterly instead of monthly, and as a result, their efforts have kinda dwindled off. The concern I have about consolidating them and perhaps leading to whether or not, I don't know, you know, people will be eliminated, is one of the problems we have now is we do not have enough citizen input to the process. This board of commissioners is not really expert in any of these areas, and we basically need as many ideas as we can get. The Wiki Principle is essentially that. The more ideas you listen to, the more likely you are to find the best solution to a problem. And advisory boards are the perfect way to do that, because discussions can take place within those boards, and then those ideas can be presented to the board of commissioners for action afterward. So I'd be somewhat careful about the tendency of consolidating boards. I think what I'd rather do is have the designated chair and maybe another person of each of these boards, and I would include tourism, meeting on a regular basis in order to make sure the efforts are coordinated, so they're not maxing Windows computers at the same time.
I think Ms. Gilbert brought up a good point, though. I totally agree with what both of you are saying, and it's, you know, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we get these folks talking and get things moving together to centralize where we want to go. But like the recreation piece she was talking about, there's nothing that precludes us from having the recreation piece of it tied into ED, into tourism, into the airport, when the shoe fits. In other words, with the ball fields and stuff that's gonna be going on there, they certainly need, they're, they're a stakeholder, they need to be a piece of that. But when you, then later on, as you talk about something else, restaurants or whatever, they might not need to be a piece of. So I, I think it's all, it's a living, living document, and, and we just need to sit down and figure out how we can do it. And I'd like to have a work session to talk about it and, and see what we can all come up with and build a consensus and move forward, if that's okay with y'all.
That'd be fine.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Next, we have item five, buy local Currituck presentation, and we have, oh, we have four folks joining us this evening. Half the audience is coming up here. Welcome each and every one. Please give your name and your address and where you work for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. I'm Josh Bass, President of the Currituck Chamber of Commerce and reside at 103 Egrit Cove in Moayot. The Chamber is very happy to be here this evening, and we are here to talk about the buy local campaign. The Chamber, again, is very happy to be partnering with Currituck County on this, especially the tourism department and economic development departments. And tonight, we have here with us Peter Bishop, Director of Economic Development, Diane Nordstrom, Director of the Tourism Department, and Judy Vassar, Visitor Relations Coordinator here, sorry, Visitor Relations here. And we are here to officially launch the buy local campaign, so we are very excited about that. What this campaign is designed to do is to encourage Currituck citizens to shop at Currituck businesses. These businesses are here, and they support our tax base, and in that way, they support schools, fire, EMS, and the core work of you is the board of commissioners and Currituck County. These businesses are the first to give to local charities, and they also employ our local citizens. The way we are encouraging citizens to participate, or to shop locally, is through an incentive program, which we have shared with you prior. A citizen can submit five receipts, each with a minimum of $3, or five photos of themselves at five Currituck businesses by February 29th, 2012, and that'll be the first quarter, we'll be doing this quarterly, and they will be entered into a prize drawing. The Currituck Chamber of Commerce has been traveling the county, visiting businesses to sign them up for the website, business directory, so we can advertise them. We have not made it to every business. We've done our best, and we've been to several hundred, and we have info on several hundred for the website. If we have not made it by a business, and they're watching this tonight, or you hear from them, please have them contact, contact us at the Chamber, the Tourism Department, Economic Development Department, or they can go on the website, buylocalcurrituck.com to register. So any of those ways, we've done our best to get them all, but I'm sure we haven't missed people. We have also been collecting, as a Chamber, incentive prizes, and as of today, we have 17 businesses that have donated, and I think that's about, we put out the call about two weeks ago, so I expect that number will go up. We have 17 businesses that have given us prizes to give away, and as of this afternoon, those are worth around $2,000, the total of all of those prizes. So I think we're doing tremendous. The businesses are very excited about this, they want to participate, they're excited about all that you as a county are doing for them. The website has a database that is alphabetical and searchable, and did you want to bring that up? So you can see the Google map there at the top, the Google map makes it searchable. So for example, you could type in a term like grocery or gas. So let's say we typed in grocery. That would bring up the grocery stores here in the county. And again, if there's a store missing, all that store would have to do is contact us or to go on the website to add their information, or if something is incorrect, we've caught certain things as we've been editing this, it's a work in progress, but we're hoping to fine tune it. So if businesses will go on, check their own listings, they should be able to edit it, and if there's anything wrong, they certainly can let us know. It's important that we've launched this campaign now, since we are heading into the holiday shopping season. In fact, we've already had local businesses using this website to show what they are doing for Black Friday coming up this Friday, which I think they'll share with you later. In addition to this Friday being Black Friday, this Saturday is Small Business Saturday, which is an American Express campaign to encourage shopping at small businesses. Many Currituck businesses are participating in this, and American Express, if you as a consumer participate, they'll actually give you money to go and shop at those businesses that are participating. During this holiday season, remember what great gifts you can buy here, from locally-made art and pottery to gift cards for Currituck restaurants. Or you could even be more creative, and who among you couldn't use an oil change, haircut, something like that as a gift? So remember our local businesses this holiday season, support your friends and neighbors, and buy something here in Currituck. What is great, again, is how excited these businesses are. They really appreciate that you as the county commissioners for funding this, and we as the Chamber are so glad that you have allowed us to partner with you as the county on this. It is really a unique public-private partnership between Currituck County, the tourism and economic development departments, and the Chamber. It is going to help all of the businesses here in Currituck, large and small, and I thank you personally, and also for the Chamber for your support of the businesses here. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Diane Nordstrom for the Tourism Department.
Thanks, Josh.
I have just one thing to say. Josh, thank you so much for what you do. You have been a welcome asset to the Chamber and to Currituck County, and you're doing a good job. Everyone I talk to just marvels at how well you're doing, and I wanted to thank you. You deserve the thanks.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I would certainly agree with that comment. Josh has worked very, very hard on this, and thank you for letting us come to give you an update and to share the exciting news that as of today, we have officially launched the buy local campaign. It has taken us a while to get to this point, but we wanted to do it right, and I think we're off to a really good start. So we wanted to, to share with you a little bit about the website tonight, since that is the hub of the information for the buy local campaign. And before showing you around the site a little bit, I wanted to do a few kudos. First, to VBL Technologies, Brett and Fred are here, they waved. These guys have put up with us for a while, kinda being a little picky on how the site is, but we want it done right, and they've done a really, really good job. So we got the site developed, of course, by a local company. Also wanna thank, he's not here this evening, but Mike Martini with iCandy Digital Video, which is located in Moayot. In a little bit, you're gonna see a sampling of some of the video that's on the website, and Mike has worked really, really hard, and he is a dedicated person to buy local. He's very passionate about it, so that was a great person to have, working on our video part. So just to, to give you a quick overview, a little bit of the website, we wanted to keep it simple, we wanted to keep it clean, we wanted to make it easy for people to find information. As we always say, there are some fantastic businesses in this county, and a lot of them may not sit out on the main road, or maybe we drive by them every day, and we don't stop and think about what we've got here in our own county. So the, the top navigation bar, as you'll see, the shop local, I just showed you that a second ago, with the search function, you can look up businesses, like Josh said, you can type in grocery, gas station, all these things, and find what, what you're looking for. We're hoping all of our businesses are on here. We're also hoping that our phones start ringing off the hook after tonight, from people who say, "I'm not on there," or "I need something changed." So that's what we wanna do, is get that word out there. We've got over 600 businesses on the website, and we know we're missing somebody. We're doing our best, but we want people to call us and, and let us know, and Peter's gonna talk about that a little bit more in a minute. You'll see the, the tab here that says learn. I'm not gonna go through everything, but just to let you know, there are posted things like the top 10 reasons to buy local, recommended reading, we'll take you links to other websites and other information about buying local. We have our buy local marketing plan, which is on here, if folks wanna read that, and then the buy local resolution that you as a board of commissioners adopted a while ago about the commitment of the county to spend money here with the county businesses.
Diane, could I interrupt you just one second?
Sure.
Two things I think is important. Is there a cost for businesses to get on this?
Nope, not at all. No cost.
I think that's important for the public to know that it's free. And number two, this website, I think, is linked into our county website as well, correct?
Yes, yes. We're, we're, well, we literally have just launched this, so our media blitz is gonna go out in the next few days. We wanted you to see the site first, before we really got out and plugged it, so this is our first time. So yeah, it'll be connected to the county's website, to the tourism site, to the Chamber site, and to anybody else's site that will link to us, 'cause we're hoping that the businesses will link to us, as we will link to their sites. The biggest requirement is that the business be located in Currituck County. You have to be located in the county. And I know we've had some requests, I won't name the business, but there's a hardware business in the county that has other store locations that aren't in Currituck. They're very excited about the buy local campaign, but they want us to promote their stores in a neighboring county. Our purpose is to get people to spend money in Currituck County, so we aren't gonna do that. That's our dedication. But it is free to the businesses, and as long as they're physically located in Currituck.
Thank you.
Good questions, though. Like Josh talked about, the buy local contest, we're very excited about that as one incentive to get people to, to buy local here. And anyway, you can go on and, and read all of this under news, we have press releases, Judy's gonna talk in a few minutes about testimonials. So please, when you get a chance, go to buylocalcurrituck.com, simple domain name, and, and come check it out. You'll see over on the left-hand side, too, where it says "our friends." We are using social networking, of course, the social media, to get this out. A lot of people look for information on Facebook, so please, like us on Facebook, if you would, and you'll be seeing in coming weeks and months, specials and prizes and other things we'll promote through Facebook about the buy local campaign. We will be doing some newsletters as well, and we promise not to spam anybody, but our main objective is to let them know what kind of deals and discounts and specials that are out there, and Peter's gonna talk about that link in just a few minutes as well. Collection sites for the contest that Josh mentioned, you can turn in receipts to be entered for every five receipts that you collect, just one entry. I'm pleased to say that our libraries, our public libraries, are gonna be collection sites for the receipts, as well as the visitor centers, the Chamber office, and the Notts Island Senior Center, and perhaps we'll expand that later, but that's what we're gonna start with. Or you can mail your entries in, and all that information is on the website as well, all the locations and the address where you can mail that to the Chamber of Commerce. I also wanna say a, a big thank you to some of the tourism staff who have really, really worked hard on this, especially the last few days. Stuart Chamberlain, who was our webmaster for the tourism department, Stuart has worked very hard on this. Kay Beasley, Clayton Howard, Judy, it, it's taken a, a lot of, a lot of folks working together to, to really pull this off. So anyway, I'm going to turn it over now to Peter.
Diane, the, the receipt deal you were talking about, is there any plans to do, like hard copies for, say, seniors who may not have a computer, to where, we, we put in senior centers around the county, so everyone can get involved and be a piece of it?
Right. And we started with a Notts Island Senior Center to make sure we had a location on Notts Island. We thought about using businesses as being the collection points, but we thought maybe the best thing to do would be to start neutral, and with county facilities of the libraries were a good option, because they do cover a good bit of the county, as well as the visitor centers. But yeah, we are gonna get around and start talking to civic groups, to the seniors, letting everybody know about the campaign. We're, I guess we're going on the, Judy, Peter, Josh, the speaking circuit here before long, to really start getting out and letting people.
That's correct. We're getting the band back together, going on tour.
There we go.
Nice question.
Yes, sir.
What is the location in Lower Currituck?
Um, in Lower Currituck, the, the lowest part down would be the library, but we could also get it at the senior center there at the southern end.
We have to have something in Lower Currituck. I mean, you've got them all over, but from Lower Currituck to the bridge is the longest stretch of the county.
Yeah, we can certainly do that, and if y'all have any suggestions of anywhere else, we were really, again, trying not to go the business route and to keep it into our libraries, our, our public buildings, so we're not picking and choosing a particular business for that foot traffic to go in. So we could, I can certainly, Diane Bray was very willing for us to go into the Notts Island Senior Center, and actually, I'd like to have the senior center here as well eventually beyond that place. But again, people can mail their receipts in. They don't really have to go in anywhere, they can mail their receipts to us.
Commissioner, the Chamber office is also a drop spot in Lower Currituck.
Okay.
Just worth a grandy.
I used to go a little bit further if we could.
Yeah, Powell's Point Senior Center would be a good place.
Yeah. Mr. Bishop?
Yes, I, I'm here to talk about a couple features of the site, but first of all, I wanted to say, the website is, it's a conversation piece. It's a way to communicate, not just with what we're trying to do with the program and what opportunities are available to the businesses, but also to give the businesses a chance to tell us what they're offering and some of the new things that can be there. So it's a, it's a constantly updated piece of information, and it requires communication amongst our staff and the group that's working on the buy local campaign, and the business owner for the new deals and things that are going on, 'cause something's always changing. And with the holiday season especially coming up, we're really excited about this. View discounts and deals, our, our sales and deals page, as you'll see Diane's clicking right here. This is a, a portal essentially for any business in the county who's registered with the program to talk about the deals that they're offering. And I see Currituck BBQ, of course, comes up, and county staff know that very well. I think my waistline knows that deal very well. We also see Southland, VBL Technologies, our partner here, offering 10% off services within the county, and then some really good deals being offered by Cotton Gin and Sanctuary Vineyards. This is going to be the place that you look, as citizens, as other businesses even, for opportunities to do business with your neighbors, to do business opportunities to do business with your neighbors, to do business with other local businesses, and find good deals, good buys, within Currituck County. We expect this page to be updated. Very often, the content's always going to be changing and dynamic. You'll see the disclaimer down there says just that. So, when you see a good deal on here, don't wait. We don't know how long it's going to be up here. You know, the businesses have their own schedules with their sales. So, please take advantage of this. We have direct links to the websites here, so you can purchase products or identify hours of operation, or even locate a product. Of course, you can always do that with our Find a Business location as well. And I want to get back to that, too, because it's very important. We can't stress it enough, how important it is to do our best to have every business represented on this website, so that everybody can participate. I know the Commissioner spoke about it minutes ago, how we don't have a business license, so we don't have a regulatory tool that tells us, everybody who's here, where they are and what they're doing. But we need that partnership. We need that information. And there's many different ways that you can do it. If you prefer paper forms, you can hand those into the county staff at the Welcome Centers, at the Chamber office. But there's also a very excellent, interactive tool right here on the website. In the upper right-hand corner, as Diane will navigate to, there's this green button that says, "Business Sign Up." And I went through this and almost filled the whole thing out, just as a test. Not even five minutes, folks, it takes to fill this out. You don't have to do any postage. You don't have to mail anything to us. All we'll do is confirm the information, and we'll get you onto the website, so you'll be mapped and found. Again, it's a challenge in Currituck County, not having the business license and being spread out in somewhat rural. We have a lot of home-based businesses. We have a lot of folks that have changed businesses or business addresses. Please check this list. Search and see if your business is on here. And if you're not, take the five minutes. Get in here, so that we can know what you're offering, and then communicate with us. Tell us the different deals and discounts that you're offering, so we can help promote those as well, so we can get, drive business to your shops, and of course, encourage everybody to Buy Local. The last thing I wanted to remind folks of, we talked about the contests. We are working on quarterly contests, so every quarter, there will be a drawing, and that is the five receipts or the five photos of yourself in front of a Currituck business. And I'll tell you what, just looking at some of the prizes that were offered, and, can we get to that prize page where we show what we're giving them? Right here on the right-hand column, you'll see the different things that are being offered. Gift cards to, I mean, I see right here the Point Golf Club. I'm going to try and get into that one, because I love to golf. But just fantastic prizes that are available, again, of no cost necessarily. If you do the receipts now, you're buying local, you're giving back to your community, so you are spending some money there. But if you do the photos, you're also bringing exposure to those businesses. It doesn't necessarily cost you anything, but it still shows that pride in Buy Local. And it's just as good as spending the money locally, we feel. And you'll be eligible for all these different prizes that are going to happen quarterly, and we're going to be updating this, as well as the deals and discounts as we get them. So, did you say over $2,500 worth of prizes already?
Almost $2,000.
Almost $2,000. Well, it'll be over $2,500 by tomorrow, right, Josh? That's right. So, I just want to express, again, my excitement in economic development to be a part of this. We've been doing some work on our economic development site as well, and we're going to promote this very heavily there. We're very excited about the database of businesses. It's something that we're going to share amongst our departments, again, so that we all know who the businesses are and what products and services they're offering to our residents. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to Ms. Judy Vassar.
Peter, there's only one thing. I guess I'm going to have to buy five different products to get the receipts, because normally with me, after three pictures, the camera breaks.
Yep, three now.
Welcome.
We are so excited to launch the campaign and the website. And the testimonials are a big part of the Buy Local campaign, because this is where your fellow citizens and businesses will find out about each other. And it's a very important part of the campaign. Already, we're receiving many calls with testimonials. We've already included this in our website, and you'll have a chance to see some of them tonight. And I think you'll find it very powerful to see the messages that these people are sending, how they feel about the campaign and their commitment to the campaign. We'll start with a video of a local resident who is very committed to the campaign and determined to use local businesses for his remodel project. Then, we'll move on to some other people. And I think Deb or Diane has that set up?
I'm ready if Deb is.
We truly appreciate their business and the fact that they're buying local, instead of going how far out of their way to find something that they don't think they can find in Currituck. If they just look around and check it out, they'll find out that there is plenty to see and buy in Currituck and their quality products. If we all work together as a community, then businesses will do well. They can hire more people, and the community as a whole will do well. And that's what's important in buying local, because in doing that, you're going, the circle is going to be complete. Oftentimes, people will tell you that they don't know you're here, they didn't know where you were located, for whatever reason. And I find that if, with this Buy Local campaign and the website, it gives people a place to go, to know where businesses are in their community, and where to find them, and who they are, and what they offer. And so, I think that might be a plus to that by having the Buy Local website, and people will finally know where you are and what you do. Sometimes, it's difficult to find the right mode of advertising in the county. And so, I think this is a perfect time for this to come out and to bring to everybody's mind what's in the county, and, you know, what they can look for and where to find them. There are so many hidden gems in Currituck County that everyone does not know about. I can think of a dozen right now that would take me a while to spout out. But there are so many hidden gems. This is going to give everyone the opportunity to know where they are and what they do.
That wasn't the video we were expecting, but it was quite good. You can go to BuyLocalCurrituck.com and check out the videos for yourself. There are some very good ones, and we know there are a lot more stories out there, some very good stories, and we want to hear them. So, people can send in their testimonies. They can send in videos or written testimonials. You can go through our website or give us a call, and we'll help you out. But if you want to check out the testimonials yourself, when you get home tonight, you can go to the, there are several different ways you can get to the testimonials. You can go to the toolbar and check on news than local stories. Then, you can also have the option of going to what, well, if you're on the homepage, if you click on the Buy Local Currituck logo, Diane, okay? That's our homepage. And if you scroll down a little bit, I call it the little people. See those little people there? Click on that, and you get some great local resident stories, some great testimonials. Or you can go to the bottom of the homepage and click on testimonials, and that's where you'll get the written testimonials. They're all very good, and it will make you feel so proud to be in Currituck and want to support these businesses.
Any questions, comments?
Any questions?
I had a comment to make. I think this is great work. Diane's crew, I'm sure, really drove VBL a little crazy, getting all this stuff put together. But it's a wonderful product. And I'm just tickled to death, too, now that the Chamber is really showing what value it has to the businesses, the reasons that they should join the Chamber. That's the advocacy unit for Currituck County's businesses. And just as you've had advertising capability up at the Tourism Department for a long time, because they've got all of these card walls up there that you can put cards in for people to pick up, the Chamber has the same thing. The Chamber has a guide, and if you're a business in Currituck, you should consider being a part of that. And you know I support this, because, I don't know if you were watching, but I saw the sheriff, and my picture's both up there on your Facebook Friends page, go by, so.
We got some new friends just in the last few minutes, so people are watching.
Okay, so you can tell we're interested, and you can tell people are into this media for you.
We did.
So, good job, all of you.
Thanks, people are watching.
Mr. Chairman, I could comment.
Yes, sir.
Diane, can you, we got an email the other day, something about Google TV. Can you tell us about that, as far as tourism goes? Because it sounded pretty special, but I was, I didn't want to get my hopes up too high, you know, on what it was.
I think it's very special. It's a big kudo for Currituck County. Currituck has been selected by the search engine giant, Google, for a case study. Little Currituck County got picked by the big dog, Google. I think that says a lot for Currituck. And the case study is about an advertising initiative called Google TV. Basically, it is getting our commercial on Dish Network, DirecTV, national television exposure at a very, very reasonable price. We were one of the first destinations in the whole country to test Google TV, and we have found it very successful and plan on increasing our budget next year for doing this initiative, because it's working well. Video is very powerful, even in just what you saw in the testimonial. And so, anyway, Currituck was selected for this. I think it's, it is quite an honor. Under the case studies that are posted, which we are posted now on Google's website, which I never thought I'd see Currituck posted on Google's website, but we are. We're under TV Advertising. There is, oh, probably about 20, 30 businesses that are listed on there, like Altel, I mean, major, major companies. There's only one other destination that's listed on there, and it's the State of Nevada. So, the State of Nevada's logo right next to Currituck County's logo on Google's website. I think that's pretty awesome for Currituck County. So, we had an, I had an opportunity to go out there, got invited to go and tour the Google campus in Mountain View, California, learned a lot about what's upcoming with Google. And our lives are going to change ever, as much as they have already with technology. It's becoming more and more a part of our lives, as we all sit here with laptops and mobile sites have just, they're just booming, and there's a lot of things I've learned at Google. But I think it's a big honor for Currituck. Thank you for letting me share that with the general public. I think Currituck should be very proud.
I'd like to say thank you to you and your team, because you bring a lot to the table, and it makes our life easier up here and as a resident of Currituck County. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And to you and your team.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank all of you for the hard work you've done and put into this, and paid dividends for our county and our citizens and our community. And thank you so much.
Can I say one more thing? I want to pat Josh on the back. During the hurricane, we had a person in Grandy, had some hurricane damage, and Josh had made himself available to businesses. I called Josh, and he was there in 10 minutes. So, good job, Josh. And you're really making a difference, and thank you.
Thank you. And if it's okay with you, I did also want to read the list of businesses that have already signed up to provide incentives, since they've kind of helped us out. We want to give them a little plug, if that's okay with y'all.
Certainly.
Twyford Law Firm, Mattress Direct, Ace Hardware, Barefoot Motor Company, Ray Farms, E.L. Miller and, E.L. Miller III and Sons, Point Golf Club, The Carolina Club, Kiefer's Bar and Grill, Soundside Recycling, Petway Pet Food, Beach Organics, Island Bookstore, East Carolina Bank, Currituck Barbecue, Southland, Cotton Gin and Sanctuary Vineyards.
I didn't hear County Manager Dan Scanlon or Attorney McCree. I mean...
Well, I got one.
Just kidding.
I don't think you're going to hear it.
Chairman, I'm going to make one more plug. When Diane was mentioning the hardware store with the locations elsewhere, I happened to learn at the one that's in Lower Currituck this past week, that they have all of the Christmas supplies from all of the stores. They were all sent over here for them to get rid of, so there are going to be some great buys down there. If you need some decorations, this weekend is the time to go. Where's this at? That would be the big red-roofed hardware store in Grandy. Just south of Grandy, the one in Lower Currituck, down there, the new one. I didn't understand. Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Next, we have Item 6, and I think, Mr. Scanlon, you'll handle that. Discussions on the Outer Banks water rates.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Several months ago, we received a lot of emails, and a lot of conversation came to the Board of Commissioners, myself, regarding utilities on the Outer Banks. And out of that, Commissioner Petrie and myself were invited to the property owners of Crawl Light to discuss the topic. And what I'd like to share with you tonight is the information we presented that today to them, along with recommendations that we made, that we're asking tonight for this Board of Commissioners to support. I'm going to ask Ben if he would run my slides for me. And give the next one, please. I'm going to break it down into two different distinct pieces. As the folks there were looking at it, it was a water piece and a wastewater piece. And I think it's important to understand both of them together to get a feel of what caused so much angst on the Outer Banks. Next slide, please. As this board's aware, of July 18th of the past summer, we acquired from Carolina Water three water systems, the Crawl Light System, Monterey Shores, and Currituck Club System. In a subsequent purchase, we acquired the Pine Island System, but that was not the focus of the issues that generated so much emails to you. So, we're focusing specifically in the northern part of the Southern Outer Banks. As you can see in the slide, we bought the system from Carolina Water for $3.5 million. In addition to that, we have another $5.6 billion of investment that we need to do to the Southern Outer Banks water system, to be able to guarantee that we can handle the peak demand that's being brought on by these new customers. So, the financial package that we had to put together was a little over $9 million that we had to fund in this acquisition. Next slide, please. What we looked at, the financial plan we came up with, was recovering a portion of that through the monthly water rates, and certainly getting almost two-thirds of it coming back in from an impact fee. The people on that system, the customers, are the only ones paying towards that project. And it's important to remember that as we go forward. Next slide. This was our, this is, was, and is, the water rates in the Outer Banks water system. When we acquired this system, we did not change these rates at all. The financial plan we built is on these rates, and I think there was some concern about whether we had changed the rates. We had not. What I want to show you now is a couple of quick steps that explained where we were and why we made this decision. There are several filings that went into the North Carolina Utilities Commission, and the information I'm going to present to you now is coming out of those filings. The public staff of the Utilities Commission went and did some calculations and determined that the average usage on the Outer Banks is 5,400 gallons of water. If you look at that against the SOB water rates, that will equate to a water bill of $44.70. Next slide, please. Carolina Water, at the time, had gone into the Utilities Commission and requested a rate increase. They wanted the rates to go to the ones being shown on the screen. If Currituck County had not acquired the system, the folks there, under the proposal submitted by Carolina Water, would have not seen $44.70 a month. They would have seen $120.73 a month water bill. That's a $75 difference between our rates and Carolina Water rates. Next slide. What the Utilities Commission ultimately agreed upon was, they actually did something a little different, a little unique. They did a blended rate. You'll see here, line number three, line number four. We know, from our experience, that Carolina Water did not have the capacity to be able to provide water to its customers all year long. There is a point in time when their system failed, they just did not have the volume. So, what the public staff did was, on line three, if Carolina Water bought water from Currituck County, they could charge these rates. On line four, if they provided all the water under their own system, they could provide line four. And we already know they can't do line four, they just didn't have the capabilities. So, one thing I wanted to show you here, so we know line three is where they would have been if they had retained ownership of the rates. So, they would have been paying, the customers would have been paid, on average, $107 a month in water bills versus the $44.70 we did. We did, and you'll see in a few minutes, we put a surcharge on that. We added $75 to that base rate. So, even at that level, with our $75, it would have brought them to the level they would have been if we had not bought the system. But amongst the many things that induced us to buy the system, our rates actually were a savings to the folks. Next slide. What I want to show you now is, here's two customers, specific customers, that contacted me and the Board of Commissioners complaining about what they saw happen to their water rates. The first one is, here's a customer that used, and these are pretty staggering. One month, they used 33,000 gallons of water, not the 5,400, which was calculated as the annual average. Under our system, their water rate would have been $299.50. With the $75 surcharge added to that, it was 374. If we did not buy the system, and Carolina Water was to continue to have been the water customer, that rate would have been $442 to them for that uses. A difference of $68, and this goes back to when we were telling the folks when we bought the system, our rates were cheaper, and it would be cheaper for us to be the utility versus Carolina Water. $68 in this case. Next slide. As hard as 33,000 gallons is to recall, here's a customer that in one month used 65,000 gallons of water. Same calculations. Under our bill, it was $634. Under Carolina Water, if we had not acquired the system, it would have been $834. Almost a $200 difference in our rate versus what Carolina Water would have charged. I wanted to bring this to the folks to Corral Light so they understand. It could have been a lot worse if we had not acquired this system. As bad as the rates are, and you'll see how bad they were in a couple more slides, as bad as the rates became, they were better because we came in and bought the water system. The message I delivered to them was, it was the right decision to make then, and it's the right decision to make now. When you look at water quality issues, you look at productivity issues, and you look at price issues. Across the board, the acquisition by Currituck County was the right decision and continues to be the right decision.
Dan, I have a couple of questions. Number one, just so everyone will know, I understand it because we've talked about it. The surcharge, I mean, you know, it can be construed that the surcharge is going in county coffers. The surcharge is part of the process for paying for the system so the taxpayers does not have to pay it.
Yes, sir.
And it's a self-supporting system. I think that needs to be made.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
A point needs to be made that it pays for itself. It's not any tax knowledge.
The fees we're talking about here are only assessed against those customers. The folks on the mainland aren't paying a dime towards the system, nor do the people in Pine Island or in Ocean Sands. They did not pay towards the acquisition of the system because they're not customers of the system. I showed you the two rates, the usage, absolutely staggering. But as you understand, the nature of our economy over there, we are a tourism industry. What this slide shows is the August water usage. You can see that over 50% of the customers served are in that high end. Next slide, you can see what happens just one month later. And you'll continue to see this trend as we go into November, December, and the off-season. Now, all of a sudden, you have 50%, not on the high end. You have 50% on the low end. So, the rates we're talking about, you can really start charging rates. The high rates were three or four months in season. Next slide. Here's the basis of the $75. Where did the $75 come from, and what are we talking about? We're actually talking about an impact fee. We're talking about an impact fee of $4,500. The impact fee for anybody else on the Outer Banks that would to call tomorrow and say they would like to connect, they would pay $6,000. So, already by acquiring these systems and bringing all these customers in, we already have offered a discount within the impact fee. We went over and talked to the communities. They felt like, in the economy what it is, $4,500 was a lot to take on at one time, and they asked us if we could handle that over time. What we offered them to do was divide it by five years, and we could do $75. That's where the $75 came from. It's a $4,500 impact fee, giving them an opportunity to pay it back over time. And you can see from the slide, the $75 was going to generate about 6.5 million of the 9 million we have to recover. The remainder of that is actually built into the water rates themselves. So, that's kind of how the financial plan was put together.
Was a discount given to anyone that paid the full amount upfront?
Yes, we did. We offered, I think it ended up to $200, $250 that we ended up, if they paid it. They could get it at, or less. The next thing, which is really important for the board to see, this is where the emails came from and the phone calls came from. It came from the sewer side. What it was important for the folks in Corral Light to understand was, they don't have a water issue. They have a wastewater issue. But the bills I'm going to show you, I understand and certainly sympathetic on why they were calling. If I was in their place, I would have called too. Just something real quick. July 1st of 2010, Carolina Water went to Utilities Commission and said, "We want to raise our rates." That started this process that we're going to get right through here. September 13th, the Utilities Commission has a, Carolina Water, on September 13th, Carolina Water has to notify the Utilities Commission that they, in fact, have sent a letter to all their customers. There was, we received emails from customers saying they were not aware of this. In fact, they did get notification that was sent to them. On October 27th, the Utilities Commission came out to the Outer Banks and had a public hearing. It was in Kitty Hawk. Eight people from the community came and testified at that hearing. They also had a meeting on December 9th. At that meeting, myself, the county attorney, and the county engineer, we went to Raleigh and actually testified in front of the Utilities Commission opposing the requested rate increases by Carolina Water.
Another question.
Yes, sir.
If these rates were affecting the people on the Currituck Outer Banks, why was the public hearing held in Kitty Hawk instead of Corrala?
I can't speak to that. I mean...
That's the kind of stuff that really gets people boiled up. You didn't even hold it in the community that were, we didn't do it. I understand that.
The public staff sets it up. I have no idea why they went to Kitty Hawk.
But that should have been held on the Outer Banks of Currituck, not in Kitty Hawk.
Yeah, I know when we acquired the system, they actually had the public hearing in Corrala. I don't know why, what the rationale was behind there. Again, we didn't set the meeting up. On July 27th, the Corral Light Homer Association goes on record. They oppose, up until this rate increase, Corral Light and Monterey, and again, we're talking wastewater. Corral Light and Monterey were linked together, and the rates that they pay for wastewater was associated with the capital investment that was made into the Monterey plant. Corral Light goes on record because Corral Light is not, they're not on that plant. So, they go on record complaining that here we are, built into our wastewater rates, is a capital recovery for Monterey, which we're not even a customer to. Unfortunately, the Utilities Commission law allows that to happen. It allows a utility to pass the rates across their customer base statewide. Sometimes that works to your advantage. Sometimes it doesn't. In this particular case, it was working to the disadvantage of Corral Light. The rules allowed that. On, I think it was March 22nd or thereabout, the Utilities Commission comes out with these findings. They start out, they say that it is appropriate for the Public Utilities Commission to, or the North Carolina Utilities Commission, to consider the rate increase. But they go a step further. The public staff goes on record saying that the rate should be charged by volume, not a flat rate. Up until this point in time, Carolina Water had a flat rate, which you'll see in a second. And the public staff says it is more equitable to charge it as a volume rate. They further go on to say that they're supporting that position because public testimony, there was actually one of the folks that spoke, one of the eight that spoke, said they would prefer this manner. They also felt like going to a volume rate was more equitable because larger houses use more than smaller houses, and therefore, you're being more equitable how you pass the cost on. So, on March 22nd, 2011, the North Carolina Utilities Commission approved the following. They went from a $40 flat fee to a volumetric fee, and they also changed the flat fee. They allowed for a one-inch meter, or less than a one-inch meter, a three-quarter inch meter, they allowed the flat fee to go to $55.54, and then added on to that a $7 per thousand usage. This chart shows you the impact of what just happened.
Mr. Chairman, let's clarify. That is the water meter on which sewer rates are charged off of. It's not a meter on the actual sewer line.
When they changed from a flat fee to the meter fee, we were, at that point in time, we were buying the system, and the Utilities Commission, I guess, sort of mandated or stipulated that we would enter an agreement with Carolina Water where we would provide them the water usage numbers. And so, what you used in water was turned around, and that's what the basis of using, you're calculating your wastewater, and that's correct. There is not a separate wastewater meter. And you'll see here in a few minutes why that's significant and what we're talking about doing.
You're going to talk about using water?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, I just want to go through real quickly here, and we showed you three examples. The first one is, the public staff computed the average rate of use. It's 5,400 gallons. If you apply these rates to it, you see the wastewater bill now becomes $93.66. The other two examples I had, 40 to 33,000 and a 65, you can see what these new rates will do. Now, on to what, this is where you got the phone calls. Okay. This is an actual house. They use 19,550 gallons of water. If you go back a summer, go back to summer of 2010, where they were situated, they would have paid a water to Carolina Water at the rates. Their water bill would have been $188. They had a flat wastewater, $40. So, their combined water and wastewater bill was $228. That same house this summer, same usage. Their water bill now goes to $236, and their wastewater bill goes to $193. Their bill has doubled, their combined water and wastewater bills. You can actually see it better in the next slide. You can see what's happening. It's a $48 increase in a year on the water side, but a $153 increase on wastewater. They had a wastewater issue. Now, the reason they called, their utility bill's doubled. I'd be upset, too. Real quickly, I'm going to show you the next two. Look what happens to the two users that use 33,000 gallons and a 65. The 33,000 gallon user, their bill goes from $348 to $659. They had a one-month water and wastewater bill of $659, a $300 increase. $62 of that is the water. $248, almost $250 increase is wastewater. It's a wastewater issue. 65,000 gallons, you see the same thing. Here's a bill, this lady, very upset. One month, a $1,156 utility bill for one month. She wrote a, I told her she wrote a, probably one of the best, well-constructed, angry, nasty emails that I've read. You've got to appreciate the art of writing a bad email, but I could see what motivated her for. That's a $500 increase in a utility bill in one month. But you notice, again, the water side of it was only $62. $474 was driven on the wastewater side.
Dan, let me ask this. What is the essence or the difference between a meter that's three-quarter inch versus something that's larger? As I understand it, it's a different rate.
Well, I'm going to get to that.
Okay.
That's coming. So, I know we're going to this meeting. I want to explain to them what's happening. They see what's happening. But to the lady that has a $1,000 bill, her question is, what are you going to do about it? And this is what we're proposing. We're proposing to go back and decrease, again, all we control. The only part that Currituck County controls is the water side of the conversation. We have no involvement on the wastewater. That's a private utility, Carolina Water Systems. So, on our side, we have gone back. When we did our financial plan, it was based on what we, because these are not, these have not been our customers in the past. We had to anticipate what we thought the volume of water would be. They actually exceeded that this summer. Now, we had a good summer. We think, when I showed you the slide, the 28% and the 72%, we think we can slide more of that charge over to the water use versus the impact fee. And so, I'm proposing tonight that we actually drop the 4,500 to 3,000. Next slide. And what that does is now, it drops that impact fee down to $3,000 from 4,500. You'll also see, though, that we're shifting about $2 million from impact fees over to water use over this period of time. Next slide, please. So, we're decreasing that. If you look at the second bullet, this is what the chairman asked. What's, the question, direct question is, why would somebody have greater than a three-quarter inch meter, the size of the house, the volume of the water going in? We were told, now, this part of the conversation is specific to Corral Light. Unfortunately, this got out, rumors got out, and people in Whalehead Notion Sand started calling. This particular piece doesn't apply to them. This is a Carolina Water wastewater comment. Some of the houses in Corral Light were so large that when they were built, they were served off for a one-inch water line. Well, in the March 22nd reading is, Carolina Water was successful getting a $55 base fee on a three-quarter inch. They got $138 for anything bigger. That's an $83 a month flat difference just because you've got a quarter-inch larger meter. What we proposed, and anybody that gets a bill, they can just look at their flat fee. For those people in, and they're customers of Carolina Water, if they talk to whomever they felt like they needed to talk to, and dropping their meter from one inch to three-quarter, they were comfortable, would not impact the pressure and volume going into the house, we would swap that meter out at no charge to them. Just by doing that one thing, it's going to save them $83 a month on their bill. There's about 40 to 50 homes specifically in Corral Light that that could have an impact. Why it's not relevant in Ocean Sands, we're the water and wastewater in Ocean Sands. We don't run those meters. We don't have those flat fees, so they're not saving the difference in Ocean Sands. This is fees charged by Carolina Water specifically in the Monterey-Corral Light area. The second thing we were doing, you go back and you look at these houses. They had 33,000 gallons or 65,000 gallons of water use in a month. And staff was trying to figure out where and how do you consume that kind of water? And one of the things that came up is, there are houses over there that have swimming pools. Filling them, cleaning them, we become issues. What we agreed to do with those is, any house in our service area that has a swimming pool that is draining it or cleaning it, if they would contact the water system, if they were in an acceptable distance to a fire hydrant where we could run a hose off the fire hydrant, we would come to them and help fill the pool up so that it's not going through the meter. Two things are going to happen here. Number one, the way our rates are built, it is, if you use 65,000 gallons, you're paying the top rate. This way, you can split that water usage up. Some of it will be billed off of the fire hydrant at whatever its appropriate rate is, which would be lower. And then, you'd have the potable water going into your house. The combination of those would drop you down into a lower rate. So, you're going to get some savings on the water. But as was suggested, I think by Commissioner Etheridge, the other thing in here that's not seen is, it doesn't go across your potable meter. Therefore, it's not being reported to Carolina Water, and you're not getting a similar wastewater charge on water that's not going to the wastewater plant. It's going into your pool. So, there's a two advantage for doing that. So, anybody that lives within a distance that we can run a hose, they give us a call. We'll go set the meter up, and we'll fill the pool up and stuff. Besides, I think it's obviously going to be very quicker. The other thing, and part of following up this conversation, as Commissioner Etheridge mentioned, on the Outer Banks, we have houses that, they irrigate their yards. They have outdoor showers. They have a lot of outdoor use, non-potable uses of water. Staff is in the process of trying to develop a program where we could go to that house, install a separate meter, have it plumbed off of the house so that their external use could be off of the meter. Number one, what it's going to do, it's going to, again, it'll drop their rates down because they're going to be under that tier. But again, it's moving that volume of water off of the wastewater charge so that you're only truly going to pay in your wastewater with water that's actually going to flow back through wastewater. So, the only part we can control is the water side. We brought these to them. The Board of Commissioners have acted on the water rates. So, tonight, if you agree with staff, we're suggesting if you would go ahead and make a motion to have that impact fee dropped. We don't control anything on the wastewater side, but we did offer them two things. Number one, they need to be talking to Carolina Water and expressing their displeasure with their rates there. But number two, there is a process where the community can petition the Utilities Commission to go back and look at the rates that they have approved. And we offered staff assistance to Corral Light's property owners of helping them put together a well-articulated argument that could perhaps go back and show why the rates that were approved by Utilities Commission might have been approved in air. One of the things we look at, again, that was alluded to in a few minutes ago, not every gallon of water, drop of water that goes in the house goes to the wastewater side. So, maybe it shouldn't be one for one. Maybe we can historically demonstrate that that relationship should be 80% or 50% or something different, and we can accumulate historic data to show that it's not a one-to-one relationship. Other things we can do is, there certainly seems to be unintended consequences, a financial windfall coming to the utility, which is not in the public best interest. When you go from charging a house of $40 a month, and all of a sudden, you're charging them $600, $700 a month, there certainly looks like there's an undue financial windfall that's coming to that property owner. So, we've offered our staff assistance to them and helping them put together an argument. And in fact, they've actually already engaged us on that, and we're working with them. So, that's the presentation that I did to the folks there. The board, I wanted to share that with you because you were the recipient of a lot of emails, and you took a lot of heat for the rates. But I wanted to be able to show to you, it really wasn't coming from anything Currituck County did. It wasn't the water rate that was driving the anger of those folks. In fact, if we had not bought the water system, it would have been worse than it actually was. But that's the presentation. I'll be happy to answer the question. And what I'm asking tonight, if the board supports the position, is if you would support decreasing the impact fee from $4,500 to $3,000.
I have just a couple of things. Number one, I want to thank you and Mr. Petrie for going over there and having that meeting with the folks. The emails and phone calls dropped. Y'all went over and done a good job of explaining and educating the folks as to what was what. So, thank you all for that. The other piece is a question. Staff's professional opinion, the system, by dropping the rate, we still... Staff's professional opinion, the system, by dropping the rate, we still financially are in good shape, where it'll be self-supporting and not worried about taxpayer dollars?
I'm not worried about taxpayer dollars.
Okay.
Because taxpayers aren't paying the system.
I understand.
It's coming strictly from the user rates.
Got it.
If there's any concern that we'd express, we had a pretty good summer, which would have driven, which drove the usage up to the point where we can make this decision tonight and make the recommendation.
Well, even if...
The downside would be, is, if in the next five years, we experience a summer where, for whatever reason, we don't have such a stellar, it could hurt at that moment in time, but it's staff's position that if we do that, we'll come back and address that at that time. We expect to have good summers, and we feel that we can do this. I think it's important that we do this, because as you can see, if my utility bills went, all of a sudden I got a $1,000 utility bill, I would be looking for something from somebody, and I think we're in a position, although I think it tightens us up. I mean, we had to, we put the pencil on it, but it's something that we could offer, and if it doesn't, we certainly would be coming back to the board in future, but that's not our intention.
Nothing to preclude us from revisiting if the circumstances warrant it.
Yes, sir.
There's one other thing that, I received some phone calls from some folks over there, and I suggested, you know, if you're doing your watering your yards and that type of stuff, put a well in. And I had more than one person tell me, the county did not allow us to put wells in over there, and I had the discussion with you folks, and that's not true.
There are some...
And then we got into the homeowners association part of it.
Yes, there's restrictive covenants in some of the areas that would prohibit a well. In fact, one of the questions we heard while we were there was, some of the community members were asking the Corolla Light Board what the process was, or what they would have to do to go in and have that amended, but that's a restriction that they placed on themselves, not the county.
Okay.
Well, that brings the next question. If people start putting wells in, what does that do to your financial story you just put together here?
It doesn't overly impact our side, it's going to impact the wastewater side. In fact, today, it's actually recommended by the state that non-potable use, water that does not go in the house actually should be under a separate meter because it was part of the governor's initiative for droughts. They recommend that county governments have the ability to go in there and restrict or shut down other uses of water in case you get into a drought period of time. So what we could experience actually is, and what we did with the Southern Outer Banks water system when it first started, as people see the impacts of higher rates on higher usage, and they start being more conservation-minded, and they start dropping their volume, that's when you'll start seeing some impact of that. But it's stuff we'll monitor, and again, it's, we're going to, if you don't mind, we're going to reserve the right that if we see those things coming, we'll come back to you at that time and request some kind of an adjustment, but at this point in time with what we know, we feel like this, we can offer this, and it's something that we can do.
Mr. Chairman.
I think Mr. Petrie was first, Mr. Etheridge, and he...
I'll go next.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just going to ask, with the new $3,000 impact fee, are we going to offer a discount to maybe entice people? Wouldn't be as much as what it was at 4,500, but some enticement that maybe they'd go ahead and buy that one up front?
We have pushed the limits of what we can afford, so I'm not anticipating offering any kind of discount off that if someone pays it up in front. I wish we could, but it's, we were, we've also got requests if we're going to refund in this, because what the recommendation is tonight is that we make this effective for the first billing that we do in January, which would be before the December usage, would actually be the ones that would see this benefit. So the first full billing we do in January to make this effective. And again, we feel like we're pushing the limit.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I did go over there that day, but I want to make sure that everybody here and everybody in Currituck County know that all the credit goes to Dan and the staff. They're the ones that crunch the numbers. All I did was introduce Dan, and Dan, I know you got a lot of pressure from this board, so I want to thank you for what you did, and also, as far as that irrigation goes, I think Corolla Light is looking at their covenants. They, it's mandatory that some of the people over there irrigate their yards, and I think they're looking at that also. But I just want to make sure and thank Dan for all his hard work and his patience.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none? Need a motion?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item number seven, appointment to the Tourism Advisory Board. I think we have three appointments, Mr. O'Neill, Mr. Petrie, and Mr. Etheridge. Mr. Petrie, I'll ask you if you want to go first?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Ted Jakuki. He's filed out an application. He's the owner of Giant Slice Pizza in Timbuktu, and also a gourmet popcorn shop, so he's familiar with tourism. Along with what Mr. Scanlon was talking about, we had a good year. It'll go back to Diane Nordstrom and her team of promoting Currituck County to, for us to have a good year, so the pressure's on you. We gotta, we appreciate all you do to promote the county, so we gotta have to keep having good years.
Mr. O'Neill, I, you want to defer your choice?
I'm going to defer mine.
Mr. Etheridge?
Real point, Paul Robertson.
Okay, we have two nominations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next, we have the consent agenda. Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we have Commissioner's report. Mrs. Gilbert, I'll start with you this evening.
I would just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and we have so much to be thankful for. I am grateful and thankful for the opportunity to serve Currituck County, and the blessings that I have with my family and friends, and I just wish that you all have a wonderful holiday season.
Mr. Petrie?
I want everyone to enjoy their Thanksgiving, but I think it's real important that we remember those less fortunate this time of year. So if you're in the food line or in the grocery store, and you can pick up a canned good or whatever, contact the pantries, either Lower Currituck Food Pantry or Pillmore, because we, you know, we're just so lucky to have what we have, and we just have to remember those less fortunate.
Mr. Rohr?
I'm just going to second those sentiments. I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving. Get out and shop locally this weekend, and as Commissioner Petrie said, please remember your neighbors who are less fortunate, help them out if you can. Plenty of opportunities available, just keep your eyes open and take advantage of it.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill, excuse us.
I'd just like to comment, on the 11th of November, we had the local Rotary Club help sponsor the Veterans Day ceremony we had at the Veterans Park. It was a little chilly, but it was a very nice program. I believe Commissioner Martin was there, and Commissioner Petrie, and the speaker, who was a member of the Wounded Warriors, just, not all injuries are physical. There are people that are in combat operations right now. Some of them are physical, but not all injuries are physical. The next thing I'd like to do is, I'd like to ask the county manager to please give us an update on the historic Jarvisburg Colored School, since the county has set aside funds to finish that restoration. I would just like to know where we are on getting some things that are visibly seen.
Yes, sir. I think as staff reported some time ago, we had finished the designs. There is a civil piece put in the parking lot in Stormwater Inn, and then there's some items left on the house that need to be addressed. We finished the design and received all the permitting for the civil information. The project was put together, and it was placed out for bids. Unfortunately, when the bids came back, the civil side of the project came in underbid, but those elements associated with the house came in overbid. We have met with the State Historic Society to look to see what is required in a historic restoration, to see if we could do some value engineering to get the project, the house numbers, back down within the budget range. What we're prepared tonight to do and ask is that, being since the parking lot in the Stormwater, that piece of the bid was under, what we projected is to move forward with awarding that part of the work so that we can move forward, and we'll continue to work with the architect and the committee to go back and visit the things associated with the house, because it does look like, no matter what we do as we get to the end of the value engineering, that although we were able to cut some of that back, we're not going to be able to reach fullback to the budget. So in order to not hold up the parking lot in the Stormwater, is to go ahead and move forward with that while we continue to work out the house piece.
Well, you know, I agree with Mr. O'Neill. We promised the folks on that trust or on that board that we were going to move forward with some stuff, and I agree with him. I think we need to do what we can to move it along. I happened to write, I come by there Friday, I believe, and either the paint or a piece of, it's been painted.
Paint's chipping off.
Paint is, I mean, it's peeling off the outside of the exterior of the building.
Addressing that is one of the items that's on the list for the house.
Okay.
Conditioning the air, security system, paint, handicap access ramp, there's a list of things on the house, and that list of stuff came in higher than the budget. And again, we've been successful working with the state, getting a better understanding of what those items need to be, and we were able to reduce the amount, but we haven't completely closed that gap up.
Okay. Do you need a motion from us to move forward with what you've laid out?
You certainly can do that, yes.
Second.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Bring it forward.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Etheridge?
Like everybody else, just like for everybody to have a happy and a safe Thanksgiving. Mr. Manager, do we have any information on a company called Zapata working over on the federal properties? They are a munitions recovery organization. Got several calls about, they're over there working on the beach and working behind the doon line, and of course, it's people with conspiracy theories wondering what's getting ready to happen since they're over there doing that.
I have limited information about what that is. We were contacted by Fish and Wildlife several months ago that some unspent ammunition's were found on the Monkey Island tract, and they have contracted with, I didn't know the name of the company, but if this is the company, but they have contracted with the company to come in and to properly dispose of those, but there is some munitions on the Monkey Island tract of Fish and Wildlife, and they're handling that project.
It's Zapata.
Okay.
Z-A-P-A-T-A.
As I understand it, they're working in conjunction with the Corps of Engineers. The Corps come in and done a survey, laid off areas, and Fish and Wildlife now has contracted with them to go in to remove those ammunition's from a safety standpoint. That's what's going on, to my knowledge. Mr. Martin?
Yes, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and just remember, you know, our men and women who aren't with us, and send them an email, or call them on the cell phone, and just tell them that we here in the county are thinking of them. Went to the RPO meeting last week, and we put 100 points on the extending the four-lane all the way from Pasqua Tank to 168, and it seems like we have support from the other counties around us, and so that road is going to be one of the priorities to be a four-lane, and that's good news for us, because with the new Currituck Center that is going to be built on that highway, we'll have a lot more traffic, and it can move the tourists and all the locals as we go to the Y. And on that note, the Y opens at 5:30 the 27th of December, and I will meet you there. That's 5:30 in the morning.
Thank you, sir.
I would just like to say the same thing. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and bless each one of you and your families, and keep the spirit of what it's about, and just enjoy your Turkey Day and have fun. Mr. Scanlon, do you have anything this evening?
Yes, sir. Just want to remind the board that tomorrow, the county attorney, myself, and the county engineer will be going to meet with the North County Utilities Commission, the public staff, to discuss a regional wastewater plant that's being proposed on the Outer Banks, and we'll be out of the office.
Okay. That being said, I need a motion to go into closed session, pursue it to GS 243, 318, 11A5, to instruct county staff concerning position or action to take it on over half the county and negotiating the price and other material terms in contract for acquisition of real property.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.